Twenty nineteen Springfield Plant and Commission meeting to order and we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
All right, we are ready to call the roll.
Yeah.
Poole.
Here.
Woodard.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Hollinsworth.
Here.
Mason. Gregg.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Boyd.
Here.
Eight members here, one member absent, we do have a quorum.
Okay, we are ready for approval of the minutes from August first, is there a motion?
There's a move.
I heard a move and I heard two moves, I think, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, they'll stand approved as presented. Under new business, we have a request for one add-on, it's Excel Industries' two-phase site plan, is there a motion to add this to our agenda tonight?
There's a move.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna add that one on and make that item number two. We also have a request on item number four to bump it up to now, if that's okay. Is there a motion to put item number four on the floor for discussion?
There's a move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll do item number four first here.
Mr. Chairman, item, the new item number one is just a review of Village Green Town Homes Phase One, at the last Planning Commission meeting, you approved that staff and Mr. Arts get together and work to get a final plat together for Village Green Town Homes Phase One, seeing as there were no new utilities to have to do, no sidewalks or anything, and so the review is, we just wanted to let you know that staff was able to work with Mr. Arts, this was the original preliminary, and we got the final in, and actually, we recorded it the following Friday, we recorded it, yes, on the following Friday. The transaction between the Rayazes and Michael Hunsucker has taken place, and Mr. Hunsucker would like to come up and thank y'all for working with him on this.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to say thank you for allowing Mr. Arts and Mr. David Brewer and Gina and their entire team to work with me and get this project off the ground. We worked on it, gosh, I guess about nine months, and me and my girlfriend and my partner in business, we're very thankful that you guys allowed us to do that, we're very, very excited about being in your community and in the city of Springfield and counting on this not being the only project that we do. But I just, David and Gina and their entire team, Samantha, I've worked in several areas around middle Tennessee, and I've never had somebody that kinda just brought me in and said, "Let's work together to get this pushed over the goal line," and it's always kinda been, you know, hurry up and get out of my office kinda thing, and it was the exact opposite here. And I just wanted to say thank you and how much that me and my family, my girlfriend's family and our group appreciate you guys pushing this through for us.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, no worries.
Guys, is there any further action that we need to take on that, David? No, sir. That was just approved at the last meeting. You're right, we were just catching up today.
All right, now, our added-on item was the Excel Industries' two-phase site plan. With this, we need a motion to put this on the floor for discussion.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
There's a move.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, what's this all about, David?
Mr. Chairman, the city staff has been working with Excel Industries since February of 2018 to get a site plan together. Their intention is to add, and just off the back, so everybody knows where we're at, it's at the end of New Hope Lane here, here's Bill Jones Industrial Drive, here's the end of New Hope Lane, this is their existing, and then there's a proposed warehouse in this area, and that's what we're talking about. So, things that we have done to help Excel Industries move forward, they were previously zoned CG, they had a non-conforming use, we never knew that they had gone into the building to begin with, so when they came and started talking about an expansion, the ordinance says that you have to come into compliance with the whole ordinance and any other ordinance that applies. So, they had a, they had a use that was non-conforming in CG and could not be made a conditional use in CG. So, we worked through this planning commission and re-zoned that property for them to R.I., Restricted Industrial. But, the use that they have is metal fabrication, which is not a use by law with N.R.I., and we went to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a conditional use for intermediate impact, right here, the conditional use, intermediate impact activities, and all the surrounding property owners, there was quite a few that showed up, wasn't there, Mr. Poole, and they walked away feeling everything was okay because the use wasn't really changing, we were just getting it to a conforming use. So, we've gotten that done for them. Okay, so now, what they wanna do is they wanna do a two-phase paving plan. This would be the first phase right here, their parking lot, their building, and this is their, some of their existing property, and let's, let me go back, and so, that's what they got proposed. Now, what we've got pending is, is the site plan is still not 100% approved, there's some issues with stormwater management that we're trying to get answered through their design professional, the board, y'all, another thing that we did, we brought to you guys an abandonment, abandonment of the right-of-way for New Hope Lane, and we, y'all approved that, we took it to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and we've had two readings on it. They have yet to get us the legal documentation to make that transfer, but more importantly, the city of Springfield is not gonna make that transfer until we have an approved site plan, or, and if y'all approve a two-phase paving, have, you know, that they're gonna do what they're gonna do. So, that's pending, the right-of-way, there's also a, so once the right-of-way is transferred to them, they have to get us a plat combining their existing parcel right here, the right-of-way, and then there's two parcels right here, that they have to combine into one parcel, and that, and that subdivision plat will also have to show proposed easements for utilities because they're gonna relocate utilities with the addition of this new building. And then, they have yet to turn in building plans. So, you know, depending on the use, they may even have to be sprinkled for all we know, but they have yet to build, turn in building plans. The building is of size that it'd have to be, you know, stamped set of plans, so we're still waiting on that. So, with that said, I went too far. This is the new addition, and as you can see, it is right there on that right-of-way. But this is the pavement that they're requesting in this first phase of construction. Over here, they want, two years after the certificate of occupancy is issued, they want two years before they have to perform the paving. Now, there has been discussion between myself, the city attorney, the city manager, there is no way they cannot, they will have to post a bond to ensure that that happens. So, the bond would be for the estimated future cost plus 20%, and, you know, if y'all approve two-phase paving, I would request that you include a bond request as well, because they have to come into compliance with our, with our ordinance. So, it's, I'm in a, I'm in a situation I've never been in before. I don't have the authority to tell somebody that we can do two-phase paving, or, you know, over, especially over a two-year period, the ordinance says you'll pave it, you'll curb it, you'll control your drainage, so.
How long's that building been back there, David?
That building's been back there probably since I was a cadet, in the eighties.
Been gravelled ever since then, hasn't it?
It has.
And you were just now addressing the stormwater problem? There's no problem back there, I know, I've been back there before, it's about as flat ground as you can get around Springfield. So, we're just now addressing the stormwater issue?
It's been non-conforming up until this point. If he's gonna expand, the ordinance says he has to come into compliance with the ordinance. That includes curbs, paving, everything that's not paved, the sidewalks has to be landscaped.
What you said to me in the goal was, they wanna do this, they don't wanna do this, we're making them do it.
We didn't, they wanna expand.
I don't wanna expand.
Well, that's what the, that's what the ordinance says, Mr. Hollisworth.
I have no trouble with two years, I run into this, the city several years ago, we built that building on Industrial, about the paving, when Mr. Nutting was here, and got treated like a complete dog, a dog, got threatened by, I know he's not here anymore, but if they want a two-year deal, I don't think they need to put a bond up, I think they need to put, give a two-year deal to get the paving done, that's an expensive deal to put in there.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Hollisworth.
There's no problem down there now, there's no problem in that area whatsoever.
I'm not disagreeing with you, all I am saying is, is that the ordinance says you have to come into compliance, and that's the zoning ordinance that you guys use to make your planning decisions, it says that you have to do that. It also says, you know, we're not asking for a big landscaping plan, we've told him, just put grass, but, you know, my hands are tied.
Well, the, the Phase One of the paving, is that the shaded part around the building now, right?
Well, this is.
That would be done when the building's built?
Yes, this is the existing building, right here, and this is his proposed expansion, and then this is, this grayer area is his proposed asphalt or dustless surface at this present time. Two years from now, he proposes to do that, this. The ordinance says he has to do it all at once.
So, that shaded part on the first, the left-hand side is the second, the two-year part, right?
This is the first phase, this right here, going around the backside of the building and tying into this pre-existing, or what will be pre-existing pavement, is his second phase.
I want the city to be able to work with people like what this gentleman that just left said that we work with, I wanna be proactive on everything, but I want everybody to have to play on the same playing field.
Yes, sir.
Don't give this man a break if you're holding everybody else to one set of standards.
Yes, sir. And that's what I'm doing, I'm holding everybody to the same set of standards.
And this is sort of a new thing, if we, if we do this tonight, then if somebody else comes up with the same thing, we'd have to consider, like what you're talking about, we've done it before.
And that's what, and because it's an ordinance, that, you know, the city attorney is of the opinion, they have to bond, because it has to be done to be in compliance with our ordinance. They either pave it all, curb it all, address their stormwater management, because it's all required by ordinance, or you bond the second phase. Because our only other option, if two years comes after that certificate of occupancy, is for the city to take him to court. And do we want to, you know, if we can require the bond, do we wanna take the chance that we're gonna have to go to court? I, I think that that's not an unrealistic expectation of Excel Industries to provide that bond, because two years from now, we do not know, now, that's why the future cost estimate and the 20%, we don't know what by ten minutes is, I checked the oil price today, it's $56.17 a gallon, two years from now, it could be $156.17 a gallon, so that will majorly impact the price of by ten minutes if he's paving.
Okay, is there anybody here from Excel?
No, they were aware that the meeting was today at five o'clock.
Okay. But then, to go ahead and pave that before they build their building, isn't that a little...
Well, no, they're, they, they are gonna build, the first phase will be building this building and doing this part of paving. That's their first phase, so they will build this building right here, and then they will, you know, get their site in order and pave. Right here is where they have their proposed stormwater management and stormwater quality requirements, right there.
Did they give a reason why they wanted to wait two years, or because of the cost, or for some other reason?
Their issue is cost.
So, they want, they want to pay the second building in two years?
The second phase, that, yeah.
Second phase.
Yeah, that, yeah, both buildings will be built, and this will be built as well, the stormwater quality and detention, but this, this and the curbing won't be installed until two years after, well, their proposal is two years after certificate of occupancy.
So, it will just be gravel?
It will be their existing packed gravel, yes, sir.
Placed stone?
Placed stone, and, and I'm not saying that that's, but the ordinance says, since they wanna expand, they have to come into compliance. If they chose not to expand, they don't have to do anything, we're not gonna make you do anything, because you were non-conforming when you came in after this ordinance was passed in 1990. So, as long as you do nothing, your non-conformity stays intact, it's when you wanna, you know, add to it. So, now, when you wanna do an expansion, you have to become conforming, so.
So, we punish them for wanting to expand?
No, sir, we don't punish them, we, it is the ordinance of the city of Springfield.
It's a cost situation to them, so if we force them to do this, what are they, what are they to say, "Well, we just can't do anything."
And I understand that, and that may be the decision.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna stand in the way of a business expanding that will probably bring more jobs in, but over a piece of pavement.
Mr. Hollisworth, the ordinance passed by the Board of Mayor and Alderman is what it is, it's a requirement.
What's around that place, I mean, I've been over, I know what's there.
I know, it's the start of cleaning up that entire area, I'm not disagreeing with you, as other people change uses through there, they will come in their cars.
You're already gonna force them to put a retention pod in on a flat piece of ground, David.
It's the ordinance of the city of Springfield.
This board right here changes ordinances every day, we, we change stuff every day, excuse me, I'm sorry, we change stuff every day. Every day we change a rule somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see any problem with changing it for these people so they can expand and have the money to do it later on.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Hollisworth, but this planning commission does not have that authority, you do not have the authority to change the ordinance.
Not the order, but we have authority to give them what they need, I believe, I do believe, we do it every day.
We do, but, but we don't have the availability to not adhere to the ordinance, we can work with them, we can say, yes, we will do a two-year, two-phase paving, you'll have to put a bond up, you, you will have to come into compliance because that's the ordinance, and this planning commission is warranted here to that ordinance.
So, the ordinance was passed by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, in nineteen, started in November of 1990, finished up in January of 1991, and has been the zoning ordinance for the city of Springfield since that time.
Are they opposed to doing a bond?
I don't know, I haven't talked to them, I sent an email to Excel Industries' attorney informing them of the city attorney's opinion of a bond requirement plus 20%, I have not received an email to, to the contrary of that. So, I, I wanna work, I wanna work with Excel, but I don't have that authority, you guys have a little bit more authority than me, you can work with them to spread out the time it takes for them to come into compliance, I, I feel confident and comfortable with that, but he still has to come into compliance.
If we do not require the bond, and at the end of two years, he has not performed the paving as he should.
The only recourse we have, will have is to take him to court.
They shouldn't have a problem doing a bond.
I would hope not, I mean.
If they're talking about spending that kind of money, surely, God, they can perform a bond.
You know, and Excel does, you know, they do a great, have a great service, they do box girders, they do, they repair gantry cranes, they have a lot of, they have a lot of business in Springfield, they produce quite a bit of sales tax, they will produce more, I, I want to work with them, but, but fortunately, or unfortunately, however you would like to look at the ordinance, they have to come into compliance. You know, we just looked at, two or three months ago, Martin Ray, they're building two new plant, or two new building, or expansions onto their existing plant, they've got a parking lot that they're gonna have to do to come into compliance, Air Tech, you know, they're gonna do hundreds of thousands of square feet over time to, to do their expansion, they're putting in the pavement, they're putting in every requirement that they have to do, because, you know, and Air Tech is an industry that has factories on the West Coast, they think we are just the nicest bunch of people that they've ever sat down and talked to, because in Seattle, it takes them a year to two years to get a plan approved, we got one approved to them in four months.
So, this, this outfit may be tickled to death to go along with what we're talking about, we don't know yet.
We don't know, I have heard nothing to the contrary, like I said, I sent their attorney an email that said, our attorney, city attorney said that if you guys approve two phases, a bond for the estimated future amount of the paving work and curbing plus 20% would be required. Not a letter of credit, not an irrevocable letter of credit, a true bond.
Okay, that's a lot of discussion. Is there a motion now?
I make a motion that we go along with what the city's asking them to do, to comply and to do a bond.
That would be the two-year?
Give them the two years to do what they wanna do, what we're asking them to do is to do a bond.
And we will not give them a certificate of occupancy until we have the bond in place, but we will go ahead and work on getting them their site plan approved to meet our ordinance and our stormwater ordinance, and, and then building plans, like I said, building plans, the plat, the transfer of the right-of-way, and the approval of the site plan.
Okay, we got a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. We know further discussion?
So, let me restate the motion, just to make sure that we are clear, this planning commission is authorizing them to do two phases of paving, two years from the certificate of occupancy issue, and a bond for the future value of the paving, plus 20%, is what they will have to submit to do that.
Jeff shaking his head, so that better.
That's what, what we want as the city.
Yeah, that's what we want as the city and the planning commission.
Well, actually, that's what's required.
That's exactly right.
That's the motion.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Townsend? Yeah, I'm gonna not vote, but can I pass?
You can abstain.
You can.
I just moved.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes seven.
Eight.
Seven ayes, seven yeses, one abstention.
One abstention.
Okay, our third item, back to the front. Mr. Chairman?
All right, this was item, he's actually item number three, it's item number one on your sheet here, Historic Commission Additions to the Historic District, is there a motion to put this item on the floor?
There's a move.
Your second?
Got both of them, I got one over here.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, the Historic Preservation Committee received a petition and voted favorably to add seven parcels, eight parcels, the parcels are, the green is our existing historic district, the blues are the requested parcels over here that they have requested to come in. So, this one is over here on Connel, there's that one on Oak and Third, and then there's five that are on Main Street, there. So, these are the, the parcels as listed, and the owners, they've all signed the petition except for this note, North Oak Street, we were informed by this gentleman here that she wanted to add, and we are gonna run her down and make sure, but our, our historic district is, you know, just a general guideline, we really have no full, that district, uh... full, that district, plan, Historic Preservation Commission really has no enforcement authority. They have recommendation authority. They ask, you know, if you build within new, an empty parcel within that district, that you keep it, the new building, within the historic look of that existing neighborhood. And this historic district is all voluntary. It wasn't, the original was not forced on anybody. So if you look, you see, that's why it's like it is. This guy right here, he didn't want to be in. This guy's gonna be in a donut hole now. And then, you know, this area right here, they didn't want to be in, didn't want to be in. These people didn't want to be in, but these people wanted to be in. So strictly voluntary. Staff recommends the addition.
Okay, are there questions or discussions on this one? Mighty quiet after that last one, isn't it?
Well, you might tell them, Mr. David, that your Historic Preservation Commission recommended approval for these.
Right.
And they met.
Basically, Walt Hannibas lives catty-cornered across the intersection from me, and Walt is, they've been in the house for a couple of years, and they wanted to be in, so they checked with some other folks that were on North Main Street and a few other ones to see if they wanted to too. So he got eight people that said, we want to be in, you know, be a part of it. And a lot of the newer ones are down there around, across from the old coal plant, that area on North Main, and that's basically it. And we, the commission, if there's a new construction on an empty lot, we look at the, just the elevation of the house that faces the street to make sure it fits. It doesn't have to look like the other houses, just so it fits in. It doesn't stick out. And before a building permit's issued, they get approval from the historic commission, and we go from there. The same thing on, if you're remodeling the front of your house, you're gonna do it, a big enough scale project that it requires a building permit, and it comes to the commission, look at it and see, you know, it looks all right, and then they go ahead with the building permit.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, so we're ready to vote.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Hollensworth?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
All right, next item on our agenda is right-of-way abandonment on Jones Street. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Go move.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
The city has been petitioned for an alley abandonment, a right-of-way abandonment between Jones Street and Davis Street. The alley is approximately 20 feet wide, and it encompasses .15 acres. There are four property owners who, if the alley is abandoned, it would be split amongst the four property owners. Each one would have to get us the required documentation to make that transfer to them. But each one would get half of this, would get 10 feet along their property line. So this lady right here, Ann Wooden, would get that much. Mr. Parks here would get along there, Amy Combs would get along there, and Mr. Moore would get along there. And the motion is to abandon it and recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman that that takes place. So what will happen is, is that we will write up an ordinance. We've already done so. We'll take it to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Hopefully, before the third reading, these people will have all their legal documentation in hand, and we can take it right to them on the third reading, unlike the two that we have pending right now, one of them being New Hope Lane, one being Gorham Street. We're still waiting on those legal documents to make those transactions.
Okay, and the property owners would purchase that?
Well, they're asking for it right now. The Board of Mayor and Alderman can choose to ask for an appraisal of the property and ask for payment, but right now, their request is to abandon and at no cost to them, other than the cost of the legal documents required to make the transfer.
Okay, any other questions?
Staff recommends?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval of this?
I'm moving with you.
Okay, your second?
Second.
We're ready to vote.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollensworth?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
All right, then we'll skip on down to item number five. We're back in order again. Staff...
No, we've got one more.
We've got one more.
Which would be item three.
On your sheet, Wayne King rezoning request for parcel is 189.1 and 42, tags map 090. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So...
Is there a second?
Second.
Woodard?
Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
We've seen this one before. He came to us and asked that that same piece of property there be rezoned from Ag to R40. Now, he's asking that it be rezoned to R30. There were conditions that were put on it the last time that he addressed it and make sure that this gentleman right here had his concerns addressed. We do not know if that happened. The county never informed us if those, that those conditions that we requested were put forward to Mr. King. We do not know if Mr. Durham was ever happy or not. But what we do know is, is that the plan, that the county planning commission passed it and their county commission rezoned to R40. So now, he wants to go 10,000 square foot lots smaller so he can put some more lots in there. Now, we, at the present time, I can only assume, because it's not been submitted to us as a subdivision plat yet. It will come to us, and it will come back to you as well. I can only assume that this cul-de-sac, it has two different bulbs right here, combined is less than 1,200 square feet, much like Eden Point. If it's 1,200, 1,200 linear feet or less, then it's good. So I have, we've not seen an actual plat to put scale to to determine if it meets our subdivision...
The only thing that we have is a preliminary site layout. That's all we have.
And Mr. King's representative is here if you should have any questions of him. I will not just throw him to the wolves, but I don't know if he knows any more than I know, but he smiles like he seems to.
Okay. Would you like to speak to the group?
Come on up here, please.
We're looking at what you came on site plan portion of it, but before that, we're trying to get through the zoning change request. It started out as R40 with, I think, 14 lots. When he came to us for the site design, we saw the potential to expand it a little bit to gain a few more lots and closely match the adjacent properties along 49. I do know that the roadways in their individual segments are less than 1,200 feet long, and we're showing 22 lots. That's the maximum density that you can fit on there, but we're gonna have constraints with soils through TDEC for the septic systems that are gonna drive that number down. So it's, this is not to exceed, and we've already shaved, I think, one off today, just going through the soil map, getting the layout dialed in. And we will come before the city for approval. It falls within the growth boundary of the city, so we have to meet the city's regulations.
Okay, any questions while he's up there?
All right, it was R40, right?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't you have the consensus of the neighbors around that to do it R40 because they want it to be so dense when we started?
The density, as far as the size of lots, not really changing. The R40 were a lot bigger than 40,000 square feet.
That you're adding lots.
Right.
So your density grows. Your traffic grows. And that's the same plant we talked about, the right-of-way in, the dispute there on that.
Neighbors was at the meeting.
The best I understand, the right-of, the dispute was that easement between Mr. Durham, but Jonathan and Wayne own the adjacent property, so the easement will remain untouched. The new road will come in on that separate property. And I don't think the previous...
I would like to hear what the neighbors have to say. If you're gonna, if you're gonna make it denser, they need to have a say. And if they had a say, it was R40, and everybody was kind of agreeing, it's okay, you want it to be that dense. They want to be lots in there behind everybody. So I think the neighbors, before we vote on anything, we need to have that input at this time, because you are against, you know, it's gonna be more dense and more traffic. Any neighbors happy?
There you go.
This girl, Mr. Please. My name's Kathy Jones, and I live at 5077 Highway 49 West, the subdivision. My house is gonna be like, is right here, a new house, and the subdivision's gonna be right behind me. And I don't really have a problem with it. Mr. King and his son built my house. I'm not a family friend of them. I've known them for years, but I know the quality of their work. We did get a letter from the city telling us about the meeting tonight. I did call Jonathan last night and ask him a few questions, and my, I know this is hearsay, but my understanding is that he did either, I'm not sure, either Mr. Durham called him, or he called, I think Mr. Durham called him and asked him about the, you know, going into the subdivision, and he told him, and he's told me that he would offer land to both, after he got his entry, give land on both sides to the homeowners if they wanted it and would cooperate, and there would be no problem on the entrance there. But it's gonna come out on 49 West. It will not bother me on the traffic. I don't know if other neighbors have concerns that live across the street. I've lived on a farm. I've lived in town. I lived at Oakland Farms, where it was very congested. You know, I work for the gas department. I see the City of Springfield growing. Everywhere you go, a lot is being, a house is being built on it. And Bill and I said, when we built our house, we wouldn't gonna be merit to our house, you know, if we decided whatever happened. Even if you had a neighbor down the street and you didn't like them, they had a loud motorcycle, you may have to move. I don't have a problem with it, and I don't think Bill does either. And I know the neighbor that we sold our house to was aware of the meeting tonight. I think everybody's main concern would be that they're gonna be nice houses. Jonathan told me last night they were gonna be one-acre lots, and that that way he could get a couple more houses in. And I asked him about the garages. Were they gonna be on the back, or the side, or the front? Because that might be concerned to me. And he said he thought they were gonna try to work them on the side. So I'm hoping nobody will come in right behind our fence row and everything, but I don't have a problem with it. I just, I'd much rather have that back there than townhouses later on, maybe condos, or, nothing wrong with the trailers, but you know, I just, whatever. That's my preference.
All right, thanks.
Miss, you have any other questions of this gentleman?
Did he know about the meeting?
Yes, he did. He got a letter.
He got a letter?
He called me.
Jimmy Thieves?
Yes.
And did I understand that she said, or they said that these were almost one-acre lots?
That's what she said.
The all-very zoning allows them to go a little bit narrower on the road around to squeeze in the extra.
Call that I got.
I think it's no more than six lots from what the previous design, but the aggregate lot size is gonna be approximately an acre.
That's probably the larger of the lots of anything in Springfield now.
And that's what we were looking at, the adjacent lots on 49 are in the .7, .6, .8 range, which is close to 30,000, less than an acre. So it fits the area. And it allows Jonathan to gain this company more help.
It's hard to see. Yeah.
What would the price of these homes be?
He's thinking somewhere around... With the city's requirements of the curb, the sidewalk, that's gonna drive a block right into them, which ultimately drives the price of the house.
As you go down, I looked at the property database, but I can't...
What Mr. Hollensworth and I are discussing is that I had one property owner call me.
Jimmy Thieves?
And he was in objection to go, he had no problem with the R40, but he had an objection going to the R30. So that is the, I sent out, how many letters there? About?
16.
16 letters, and he's the only one who called me.
And remember, commission, all you do is make a recommendation to the county's planning commission, either to approve the rezoning or your recommendation to rezon, to...
We don't change anything, but we recommend.
You can recommend to approve or disapprove the zoning, but you will have to make that recommendation.
How do we know what the other neighbors, how they feel about it? Maybe just a handful of people know what's going on. So is it anyway, do you do like a survey and let the people in the neighborhood see how they feel about it?
Well, we notified all the property owners surrounding it. Theoretically, it's his right to ask, and it's y'all's privilege to either recommend or not recommend.
The last meeting, this came up two months ago.
Two or three, yes.
We have several neighbors here, and, you know, we don't know. We have one. So evidently, it's not a big concern, but the only thing outstanding was the congestion. At the end of the call, you have one concern out of 16. I mean, and I had to say, if I'm really concerned about something, I'm showing up. I'm gonna be there. I'll enforce my opinion. You don't have an opinion about anything, you know. But I will force my opinion if something like that comes up. But evidently, he's not here, so, you know.
Are you talking about Mr. Thieves?
Yeah.
I don't think he was able to be here, but I'm not, I don't remember why, but he did call me, and I made record of it tonight.
So you know, you have three options. You can recommend to the planning commission, the county planning commission. You can recommend disapproval, or you don't have to make a recommendation at all.
What was the price point?
300.
300 plus, three, in the 300s. We definitely need some more of that.
I think a one-acre lot's plenty of lot.
Yeah. Oh, it is on 300,000, not half.
Yes, you need to step up here if you have a question. Mr. Chairman, would you allow to ask a question?
That'll be just fine. Come on up. That'll be just fine, come on up.
Well, my understanding was, and I might ask the engineer, I was thinking they were gonna be like 375 or 400,000, because the lot's gonna be, the house is gonna be 300,000, and then the price of the lot, and the price of the lot is probably 50 to...
He said between 50 and 60.
Mm-hmm. I have seen the quality of the house that they have built for 40 some odd years. They were highly, I lived in the Straussville community, and his father was well-known for building houses in Chatham County and more or less towards that area. You know, nice, quality houses. We were well pleased with our house, but like I said, I know growth is coming, so whatever, which I would like.
Okay, is there a motion? What's your thoughts, David?
What's 10,000 square feet, Monk's friends? I mean, he's only getting a couple more, you know? This particular design does not meet our, our rec, our zoning or our subdivision regulations, because we don't control this road out here, and so we don't know, that would not be allowed in the city of Springfield, unless there was a road that met our standard, and that road doesn't meet our standard. So I don't know if those two lots will disappear in this as well, so you know, he's already lost one due to soil, he may lose two more. But, you know, growth is coming. We can, we can work with people the best we can, or, or not. We, we choose to work with them if we can.
Do we provide all of the services as a city? Water, sewer, gas, everything?
No, sir, he's outside the city limits. We will provide water, gas, that's it. Coming in electric and sanit, uh, subsurface septic systems will be their sanitary sewer. I did talk to him about annexation, but they were not interested in that.
All right. Are we ready for a motion now?
How much a motion we approve? We recommend the rezoning to 30.
I second that.
There's a second. We have a motion and a second. And that would be to recommend the R-30 zoning.
Yes.
And this is just in the form of a recommendation to the Robinson County?
Exactly. To work exactly what they paid for it.
Yeah. Just to...
All right, we ready?
You go. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
All right.
Okay.
Right now, are you ready to go with?
I am ready to go.
Okay.
I will pass these out, and we will be ready to go.
Kathy, 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 you and Tony can leave if you want to. This is about the zoning ordinance. Just let me know.
She's saying it might get a little long, I think.
I certainly hope not. It has the potential to.
Me too.
Depends on, one hundred question who I ask.
This is homework.
Okay. Are y'all ready for me to start?
Did you hear Alan?
What?
He said, "This is homework."
No, it's not. It's just, it is a review, though. Mr. Chairman, are you good to go?
We're ready.
There's no vote on this, so it's just...
No vote.
Okay. Let me move on. Okay, review of the zoning ordinance. As required by our zoning ordinance, Section 111302, appointment and duties of the community development director, the duties of the office of the community development director, the community development director shall enforce this title in addition thereto, and in furtherance of said authority, he shall initiate, direct a review from time to time, a study of the provisions of this title, and make reports of his recommendations to the planning commission at least annually. I've been here 22 years. This is the first time we're doing this. The zoning ordinance for the city of Springfield was adopted by ordinance 1918 in November of 1990, and the ordinance, and the zoning ordinance was originally part of the municipal code, Title 11, Chapters 2, 2 through 14. At some point, the zoning ordinance became a standalone document. Don't know, I have not been able to figure out when that happened. Since its adoption, the zoning ordinance has been amended by ordinance 60 times, a minimum of 199 times. This is the work. This is every ordinance that we can find amending our ordinance. All right, so, Chapter 1 is the ordinance. There were no amendments to it. Chapter 2, general provisions relating to zoning, construction of language and definitions, amended three times. Chapter 3, use classifications amended four times. Chapter 4, application of regulations, provisions, and section, there were no amendments. Chapter 5, residential district regulations has been amended 34 times. Chapter 6, commercial district regulations has been amended 20 times. Chapter 7, industrial district regulations have been amended two times. Chapter 8, supplementary district regulations have been amended 77 times, and within those supplementary district regulations is assigned regulations that have been amended 59 times. Apparently, signs are important to people in Springfield. Chapter 9 has been amended 20 times, and that is, that one's due to the state sending out a new ordinance every three or four years. Chapter 10, planned unit development district regulations has been amended four times. Chapter 11, performance standards have not, has never been amended. Chapter 12, provisions governing non-conforming uses and non-compliant buildings or other structures has been amended one time. Chapter 13, administration and enforcement has been amended 28 times, and we added a chapter, 14, added six sections, that's the grading and erosion control regulations. In Chapter 15, the administrative standards and legal status provisions have not been amended. The first ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance was Ordinance 9205, which amended 11808, the sign ordinance, and it amended it six times, the first time we amended it. Amendments to the zoning ordinance went well until Ordinance 9518, when adult-oriented establishments were added. There, there are amendments that did not actually make it into Chapter 6 correctly, and in my opinion, was not placed properly in Chapter 13 as the ordinance required. Chapter, Ordinance 9521, added Chapter 15, grading and erosion control regulations, which was edited into the ordinance as Chapter 14. Appendices would be added instead of editing the document, starting in 1999 with the addition of Appendix A for 118810, which was an airport district overlay. Another Appendix A was added for 11513, which is the Historic Preservation Commission. I knew I'd wear you out, Mike.
She's a little more important.
I understand. I understand. Another, and, which added the Historic Preservation Commission, amended, an Appendix B was later added, which added 11811, which was special provisions for multi-story buildings in certain zones, Appendix C, outlines, and illustrations on dwelling unit classifications. Chapter 1 is ordinance, is the ordinance 1918, and the following chapters are exhibits. The, this chapter needs to be updated to the current Tennessee code annotated. Chapter 2, general provisions relating to zoning, construction of language and definitions is in good shape, however, this chapter needs to be updated to current Tennessee code annotated. 11202, rules for construction of language, Section H, conditional use permits reference needed to be corrected for Chapter 15 to Chapter 20. Also, the chapter needs to be reformatted. Chapter 3, use classifications in good shape, however, this chapter needs to be re-formatted. Chapter 4, application of regulations, provisions, and sections is in pretty good shape, but it needs to be re-formatted. Chapter 5, residential district regulations is in good shape. Ordinance 1803 added to RS15 and renumbered 11502 through 11512, Ordinance 1822, moved 11511 out of Appendix A and put it in Chapter 5 as 11513. Amended Appendix A in the description of the Historic Preservation Commission as described in the Springfield Municipal Code, and, however, there may be some numbering issues due to five, to 11511 being added as an appendix and may not have all the information contained in the three ordinances. Will require further investigation of staff to make sure that it is right. Also needs to be re-formatted. Chapter 6, commercial district regulations need some updates, adult business establishments not cited correctly. Ordinance 1518, 11605, CS districts needs to add limited manufacturing activities as a conditional use, Ordinance 1519. CC, MPO, CG, and CS district bulk regulations need to reference Chapter 8. Special provisions of the Springfield zoning ordinance apply to multi-story buildings, Ordinance 0030. All districts need specific references to landscaping in Chapter 8. Also, this chapter needs to be re-formatted. Chapter 7, industrial district regulations in good shape with the exception of specific references to landscaping and special provisions of the Springfield zoning ordinance applying to multi-story buildings in Chapter 8. Also, the chapter needs to be re-formatted. Chapter 8, supplementary district regulations. 11801 through 11804, 11806, and 11807 are in decent shape. Parking space requirements in 11807 need to be better formatted for ease of reading and reference. 11805, special provisions governing mobile home parks needs to be removed, because this is now covered in Chapter 5. Removing 11805 will require renumbering of all the following sections. There are some issues with 11808, sign requirements need to be reviewed to ensure that all amendments have been included. Chapter 8 then starts to go awry with Section 11809. Hang in there, Ms. Boyd.
David, you must have a lot of...
No, I have been working on this since January the 3rd. Okay, Ordinance 199916 added 8, 11809, wireless towers and antennas. 0811 added another 11809, sidewalk halfway, cafe overlay zone, overriding their original Ordinance 1614 added historic downtown redevelopment overlay to the sidewalk cafe overlay, which is the second 11809. 9918 added 1110, an airport district, an overlay district. 1008 added another 1110, which was the landscaping requirements for commercial, industrial, and multifamily uses. 1715 updated 810, the landscaping requirements for commercial, industrial, multifamily uses. Ordinance 0030 added 811, special provisions for multi-story buildings, and it was added as an appendix. Ordinance 1614 attempted to straighten out Chapter 8 by moving an original 11809 to 11811, adding yet again another 811, overriding the original 811, special provisions for multi-story buildings. I recommend, my recommendation to fix this is, we do it by section and by chronologically. So we would make wireless antennas, because we're gonna pull five out, we're gonna make it 11808, airport overlay, we will make it 11809. The special provisions for multi-story, we will make it 1110. The sidewalk cafe overlay zone and amended historic downtown redevelopment overlay will be renumbered to 811, and then 8, then 11813, landscaping requirements will be renumbered to 812, and that will get us Chapter 8 straightened out. Flood plane in good shape is amended also. This chapter needs to be re-formatted. Chapter 10, planned unit development regulations in good shape, with the exception of 111006, density development. Underground utilities are now required for all subdivisions. Therefore, there should be no maximum density increase for underground utilities in a planned unit development. Chapter 11, performance standards in decent shape, but the tables need to be better formatted for ease of reading and reference. Chapter 12, provisions governing non-conforming uses and non-compliant buildings or other structures in good shape is amended, amended. Also, this chapter needs to be re-formatted. Administration in, Chapter 13, administration and enforcement. Chapter formatting is not consistent and needs to be re-formatted. All right. Within Chapter 13, 111303, talks about permit uses and occupancy permits, and who's authorized to do that. I would recommend that Section 7 be amended as follows. Site plans, or any portion thereof involving engineering, architecture, or land surveying shall be prepared and certified respectively by an engineer, architect, or land surveyor duly registered by the State of Tennessee to practice as such and only within the individual areas, area of expertise. Since 1990, things have changed tremendously, and you, you need your very specific professions to do their very specific work. Also, within 11301, I would recommend Section 12, review of site plans. The last sentence of the paragraph be amended as follows. Applicants for zoning permits should contact the Department of Community Development and Planning at least 60 days in advance of the desired construction date to determine scheduling of their site plan and zoning permit application. Once again, we now have numerous ordinances that we have to adhere to, very specifically stormwater. Every two years, it gets more and more dense. This ordinance has become more and more comprehensive over the years, so it takes longer, and we just wanna have that reflected in the fact that it actually takes longer to review these things. Okay, also within 1103, I would recommend that Section 13, review of site plans be amended as follows, and the only thing that actually changed there is that, I'm gonna start paraphrasing, we added 60 days instead of 45 days. Down there, last paragraph, additional information that is required and pertinent to the site as soon as possible within 60 days from the date a site plan is submitted, except under abnormal circumstances. So we, you know, we have more codes than we did in 1990. I don't, you know, we have the building code now, we have the mechanical code, we have the electrical code, we have the plumbing code. We've, we have, it just takes us longer to review these plans. Also, we have more stringent stormwater requirements due to state laws in our stormwater ordinance, which was required by state law, and reviewed for compliance with the state law by TDEC. TDEC, we do a review every year. Also, requirements for construction general permits and stormwater pollution prevention plans. The Board of Zoning Appeals was amended. Historically, the BCA membership has been one member appointed by aldermen's for Ward 1 and 2, one member by alderman's for Wards 3 and 4, one member appointed by alderman for Wards 5 and 6, and one member appointed by the mayor, and one member appointed by the planning commission. All appointments confirmed by majority of the BMA. However, in Ordinance 02... However, in Ordinance 0217, they eliminated the Regional Board of Zoning Appeals and reestablished the Municipal Board. It does not have that requirement. The only requirement is, is that the five have to live within the city limits of Springfield. I don't think that represents the city well. We have historically still stuck with the old system, but it's not in the ordinance as such. That's something that you need to think about. Let me know, do we want to go back and very specifically say that in our ordinance? That two will appoint, two will appoint, two will appoint, mayor will appoint, planning commission will appoint. 1306, Conditional Use Permits. The special conditions for adult business establishment was just put in there. It doesn't, it just doesn't follow any standard format. It's just like a sore thumb. It needs to be, it needs to find a proper home somewhere. But it needs to be in 1306. We just need to figure out how to format it into its proper home. 111308, Remedies and Enforcement, Section B. Penalties for violations need to be reviewed with the city's administration. The ordinance referred, referenced, Ordinance 9323, had a penalty clause up to $500, which I believe no longer applies by state law. Now, this is CE. My favorite part of this whole ordinance is 111302, Appointment of the Duties of the Community Development Director. Section C, second paragraph. Under no circumstances is the community development director permitted to make any changes to this title, nor to various terms and provisions in carrying out his duties. When you point that out, a lot of argument stops. I don't have the authority. You have limited authority. It's the ordinance. It is what it is. We're not arbitrarily, arbitrarily picking on people. I'm required, ethically bound by law, to conform to a certain standard to keep my license, which is adhered to the ordinance, and we will do so as long as I'm community development director. All right. Chapter 14, Grading and Erosion Control, added by Ordinance 9521. This probably needs to be reviewed and amended to ensure that it meets the requirements of the city's stormwater ordinance and also state requirements. Also, this chapter needs to be reformatted. Chapter 15, we're in the home stretch. All right. Administrative Standards. Provisions are cumulative. Meaning that as this ordinance is amended, everything is added on. It also means any ordinance that the city of Springfield passes and puts into the municipal code is cumulative on this as well. Examples are the stormwater ordinance and the driveway requirements. Those are, so it just, you know, wherever the ordinance is, it's got to, this makes it cumulative. This ordinance makes it cumulative. 11506, Establishment of Zoning Districts describes a multi-sheet map entitled Springfield, Tennessee Official Zoning Atlas. Never, don't know what that is. Never seen it. We're going to have to figure out a way because with the technology we have today, we can do it, put it on the web. Just have to figure out a better way to certify it. 111507 talks about certificate of that. 111509 talks about zoning boundaries and the official atlas and certifications as well. 111511, Annexation of Land. This needs to be updated to reflect current Tennessee Code Annotated statutes concerning annexation. Land is now annexed by resolution, but read as an ordinance 3 times, and a plan of services must be established with a schedule for implementation. Also, this chapter needs to be reformatted. Other recommendations. Fee of $50 is mentioned three times in this ordinance. I feel that it needs to be replaced with by a fee established by ordinance of the Board of Mayor and Alderman so that way we don't have to come back and keep amending this document and changing the lettering in this document. Let's get it so that it's, the board handles those in one planning department, community development department, fee shake. Further research is also recommended on how to best handle and address the following phrases in the ordinance because it's no longer a title, but we may have to leave it in there. Of this title, by this title, effective date of this title, in this title, under this title. Title 11, or any other reference to the word title that may imply inclusion within the Springfield Municipal Code. So that's the general, that's my report. The only other thing I have is the last page. This is an example of how I recommend we reformat the ordinance. We do away with the elevens in front of these numbers. No 11401, just 401, 402, 40, and then be 403. I got online and I researched. Times New Roman is one of the most readable fonts. Font size 12, spacing anywhere between, spacing anywhere between 1.25 and 1.5. That's a 1.3 spacing. Headings are set up as readable. I think this will make the ordinance more readable. It'll also take up less pages because we're at 374 pages right now. And that doesn't, and that doesn't, well, that may even take in the appendices. So, that's my report. Thank you. I appreciate y'all not falling asleep. Like I said, it's taken me a while to get that done. And so my, the only thing I request is that you say, you know, I used to have more hair before I started this project. But we need to get our ordinance in order. It's, you know, it's in disarray. It doesn't have everything. We need to get our ordinance in order. We need to make it, we need to codify it, reformat it, get it where everything we talk about, everything that's required is easily referenced and easily found by the design professionals doing the work.
Are all these changes, you're talking about something that the mayor and alderman would have to approve?
Eventually, yes. The reformatting, yeah, not so much. But, you know, if you take out this and you change how you call the zoning atlas something else and you, you know, you do certain things, you change those days, yes. But before he goes to the planning commission, I'm going to bring y'all the document. I'll set it down in front of you and let y'all take copies home. Y'all can get back to him in about six months because it'll take you about that long to read it because you'll start reading it at nine. Every five minutes, in about five minutes, you'll be asleep.
How much of this is going to have to be looked at by the city attorney?
Which one?
How much of it?
None of it, other than the references or how we would handle the, we may just be able to keep the title, the phrase titles in there. We're not changing anything other than adding and making sure these amendments are getting in there properly. The only, like I said, the only recommendations that I really make are the times it references $50 fees three times. And we need to come up with a better way to describe how we do our zoning math. Technology has changed tremendously over the last 29 years.
But if you reformat, you're going to have to reformat the entire...
The entire document, yes, ma'am. Eventually, it will go, after y'all have reviewed it and agree that it's in good shape, we will take it with a new Chapter 1 to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, ask them to approve it. And it will go, you know, effective date will be the original, effective date of the original document. So there will not be a change of effective date. It will be effective as of November of 1990. Any other questions? We, you know, I can talk to you about it for a long time. I try to keep it as short as possible.
We don't want to get into training session length, but when it comes up again, that'll be a long meeting.
Yeah, well, like I said, I will give it to you guys for review. Y'all take the highlighters to it if you have any questions. It's a pretty comprehensive document. It's very specific requirements. Just like, you know, the payment, it's a requirement. No ifs, ands and buts about it. I don't get to say you don't get to do it. You don't get to say you don't get to do it. As a planning commission, you can work with them like we've chosen two tonight, but it can't be alleviated unless the plant, unless the Board of Mayor and Alderman chooses to take that out. But I think, you know, our objective is not just, this planning commission's objective, but the Board of Mayor and Alderman's objective, their intent is to make Springfield a more handsome place. A better-looking place, meeting our, meeting needs for a growing community. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. If not, make your notes. Call me later. You know where I'm at. Okay. Old business, other business. BCA meeting September the 10th is a conditional use for Marty Freganrickson on the event house. Ms. Mason's old property where Ms. Mason had her event house. Okay, there have been questions about South Main Street and 10th at the depot. The planning, the Public Works Department has pulled back that curb. I think they've been, you know, by doing so, they made the corner more, the radius more turnable. Y'all let us know if it works or not. But we, but, you know, the traffic committee listened to what y'all had to say about it. We moved forward. Our only other option was to make it one-way. So we tried this first.
I would have left that little box off though. The little concrete, what, is it going to be like a tree sitting there or?
I don't know. I think they pulled some of that back. I know they pulled back on the ramp. I don't know how much did they pull back. I'd have to look and see.
It's better, but I would have left that. I think it's just a decorative thing. Were you going to put a tree or a little light pole in there?
I don't know.
A sign, does it have to go there, does it?
Say again.
A sign, one of the stops, I don't know. I'm asking.
I think the sign is on the side.
Is the sign on the other side?
It's an improvement though.
Okay. I wanted to go over ordinance 1918 with you real quick. Sorry to keep you so late, but at the first reading of ordinance 1915, the Board of Mayor and Alderman amended it to add seven, eight, seven more parcels. Now, this is the original. These, so these, these purple parcels are what the Board of Mayor and Alderman amended. So the, so the property that is to be rezoned is now up to 56 parcels. It's 56 parcels and it's 22.53 acres.